Good. All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the school board meeting for December 10th, 2024. We're going to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and the flag is over there in that corner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Secretary Summers, would you take attendance, please?
Yep, absolutely. President Reese.
Present.
Vice President Guduna.
Here.
Secretary Summers here. Treasury Whitney.
Here.
And Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Atchison.
Here.
And Trustee Alford is absent.
Good. Item number two on the agenda is changes to the board agenda. Do we have anything? No? All right. Onto our favorite part of the school board meeting tonight is our school presentation, starting with students' arts, athletics, and academics recognition programs. I believe that Anita Concha Collins is going to kick us off here in just a second.
Good evening, and as Dr. Reese said, this is the best part of the evening and probably the best two board meetings we have in the whole school year when we bring in recognized students. They are the reason we do what we do. So, one building at a time, we're going to start with Clear Lake. Students will come up to the center so you can get a picture, and the principals will share why they are being recognized. So, welcome, Clear Lake.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stephanie Neme, and I am the principal at Clear Lake Elementary School. I am very honored tonight to be here with these four students from our school. We have our students who are being recognized tonight for taking the M-Step assessment last spring and scoring at the top of their grade level. So, we have Marielle Shantz, who's being recognized for being the top scorer for English Language Arts. We have Avin Sidrovic, also the top scorer for M-Step and ELA. We have Colin Anderson and Connor Peterson, who are being recognized for being the top scorers in the math M-Step. And so, we are very pleased of their scores, and just congratulations to all four of them.
Good evening. I am Chad Boyd from Daniel Axford Elementary School. In the IB Primary Years Program, action means students actively applying what they learn in the classroom to make positive difference through small choices or larger initiatives. Taking action is considered an important part of the learning process and encourages student agency to contribute to the world around them. DA is recognizing three students who exemplified being caring by sharing their love reading with the residents at the nursing home. The students read books to the residents, who were overjoyed and appreciative of the time the kids spent with them. Our three students at Daniel Axford being recognized are Ryan Shornak, TJ Shornak, and Parker Shornak.
I'm Kristin Gwynn, principal here at Lakeville Elementary School. Tonight, we are recognizing Lakeville's first-ever PACE running club. You may have heard of Girls on the Run. This is a running club for boys. This is our first-ever, organized by Ms. Holly LeCron, who graciously is here today. Thank you so much for coming. Sorry, I have to put my eyeballs on. PACE is a running program for boys in grades three through five that meet twice per week. Lessons focus on developing and enhancing social, emotional, physical competencies by building self-esteem, fostering healthy living, and encouraging social responsibility. Each practice includes a lesson, a warm-up, gradual increase in the number of laps, run around the school building outside, and stretching. And the season actually culminates, it was November 17th, with a 5K run at Bell Isle. So, all of these boys participated, including four more that are not here tonight. But here tonight, we have Fisher Gutz, Frank Hagadon, Will Moss, Henrik, and Landon Shornak. Thank you for coming. Congratulations.
I'm Paul McDevitt. I'm the principal at Leonard Elementary School, and today, I'm proud to recognize our spelling bee, fifth-grade spelling bee, Top Ten. These Top Ten students went through their classroom bees and were the Top Ten that were selected through the spelling process, and now they are getting ready to compete against each other on January 10th, when we return after break, to narrow it down to our one representative. That one representative will then go on to Oakland schools to compete in the county bee, and then into the state bee, and then the national bee if they qualify. So, here's our Top Ten that are going to be competing against each other next month. Jackson Suter, Sebastian Cooper, Noah Fetterman, Avery Thorman, Victoria Grevy, Kennedy Beal, Ellie Stewart, Valerie Spesia, Olivia McDougall, and Allison Olivo Javier. Congratulations.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Brown. I am honored to be the principal of Oxford Elementary School. I have four students to introduce to you tonight. I have Max, I have Connor, I have Charlie, and I have Lotus. They're part of a special group. As one of our IB teacher planning meetings, we are brainstorming ways to give students further leadership opportunities at Oxford Elementary, and from the wisdom of our teachers, we threw out the idea of creating a peer mediation group. Part of being a peer mediator means you have to be trustworthy, honest, a student that other kids are going to look up to and listen to. And while this is a new program to Oxford Elementary School, it was a very easy choice to choose our first peer mediators. They actually haven't started their first group yet. We're just kind of getting the process going, but teachers narrowed it down to their four names to be our first four in a matter of seconds, and so I wanted to say congratulations to our students from Oxford Elementary.
I'm the principal at Oxford Middle School, and we are excited to celebrate Daniel Lau and Yumiko Yamazaki for earning spots in the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association All-State Ensemble. That's a mouthful. Woo! So, this is a huge achievement. Over 2,500 students auditioned for only 85 spots in the All-State Band, and both Daniel and Yumiko stood out with their amazing auditions. They worked hard outside of class preparing extra music and sharpening their skills for the blind auditions. Now, they'll get to perform in Grand Rapids this January at the Michigan Music Conference. Daniel and Yumiko, you've made us all proud, and we can't wait to hear your performance in January. Keep up the good work.
My name is Brad Bigelow. I have the honor and privilege of serving as the principal at Oxford High School. Would like to just thank the board. It's always a fun evening when we're able to come together and celebrate the accomplishments, the hard work, the successes of our kids, and we're certainly going to be doing that tonight at the high school level. So, the first student we're recognizing this evening is Senior Jenna Duong. Jenna is being honored this evening as a National Merit Award semifinalist. A National Merit Scholarship semifinalist refers to a high school senior who has been recognized as one of the top academic performers in the state based on their PSAT scores, placing them among a select group of students eligible to compete for a National Merit Scholarship in the 2025 academic year. Only a small percentage of high school seniors achieve this status, signifying exceptional academic achievement. Jenna, congratulations. This is a tremendous accomplishment. Thank you.
This next human I do know, standing before me is Mallory Bigelow, senior. Mallory wrapped up her high school cross-country career by finishing 16th at the D1 State Meet held in early November. Her performance led to her fourth consecutive All-State Honor, a tremendous and rare accomplishment. Her time of 17:57 at the State Meet ranks as the fastest time run by an Oxford girl at the State Meet in Oxford girls' cross-country history. In addition, Mallory finishes her career as a four-time All-County and All-Region runner and leaves as the two-time defending OAA Division Champ. We have a few students who could not be here this evening. I'm quickly going to just speak to their accomplishments. The next one is Senior Drew Katie. Drew is a four-year varsity soccer player. He was also a starter, a four-year OAA Scholar-Athlete, individual academic All-State Award, All-District, All-Regional Team, First Team All-State this year, and he was the recipient of the 2024 Wildcat Award winner. So, Drew, you're not here, but congratulations, Drew. Next in attendance this evening is junior soccer player, Mr. Ryan Clark. Ryan led the Oxford Boys team, as their goal scorer this year was 16 goals. He's a three-year varsity starter, a three-time OAA Scholar-Athlete. He was on the All-District Team, All-Regional Team, and this year, he was recognized as a Second Team All-Stater. Tremendous job, Ryan. Congratulations.
Standing before you is Junior Neil Hassleton. Neil was one of two students who was selected for the Michigan High School Band and Orchestra All-State Festival out of over 1,000 students who performed. So, at the end of next month, in January, Neil will be on the All-State Band, and he will be playing the trombone. A tremendous accomplishment, Neil. Way to go. Next, we have Senior Diver Tristan Krajarski. So, Tristan had an undefeated senior season. She was the Oakland County Champion, the MISCA Champion, league and regional champion, and most recently, she is now known as the State Champ. I'm not done, Tristan. I'm not done yet. She was also named to the MISCA Dream Team. She broke the school record and pool record for both six dives and 11 dives. She broke the OAA Blue and the overall OAA 11 dive records, and a two-time All-American. Congratulations, Tristan.
Thank you. Standing before you is sophomore Sonia Ruiz. Sonia is also one of two students selected for the Michigan School Band and Orchestra All-State Festival, again, out of over 1,000 students. So, next month, at the All-State Concert, Sonia will be playing the oboe. Congratulations, Sonia. All right, I have two more before I introduce our last group. So, Senior Nolan Mauser, who is not in attendance tonight, four-year varsity starter for the soccer team, four-year OAA Scholar-Athlete, individual academic All-State Award. He was on the All-District and All-Regional Team, First Team All-State, captain, and the 2024 Soccer Team MVP. So, congratulations, Nolan. And Junior golfer Katie Pill. In her junior year and third year on the varsity team, Katie was named Team MVP. The team played in 10 tournaments, and Katie finished in the top seven in each one of those matches. She was named All-OAA First Team, All-County, and she was All-State Honorable Mention. She qualified for the MHSAA State Tournament as an individual for the second consecutive year. That's the first girl in the history of Oxford Golf, and I think, most importantly, her coach says that Katie is a model captain, always willing to help her teammates. So, Katie Pill, congratulations. Last, but certainly not least, if I can invite our next group up to the front, please. Okay, thank you. So, standing before you is our 2024 Oxford Boys Soccer Team. So, this group of gentlemen just had an outstanding, a very memorable year. I'm so glad that they were able to be in attendance this evening so we could honor them. So, standing before you, this is an academic All-State Team. This is the fifth year in a row that this has been accomplished, and I know that that message of taking care of yourselves in the classroom comes from Coach Bykin as well, who's in attendance in the back, but keep that up. That will get you far. But this team finished the season with a 16, 2, and 5 record, one regular season loss. They achieved a ranking of 13th in the country. They were district champs, first-time-ever regional champions, and it was their first trip ever to the Final Four. Boys, thanks for a great run. It was awesome. Congratulations.
My name is Jordan Dennis. I am the Elementary Assistant Principal at Oxford Virtual Academy, and I have the pleasure of introducing to you this young man of stature standing before you tonight. As a K-12 institution, we have had many extraordinary students receive this esteemed award, but tonight is a special occasion because for Oxford Virtual Academy. As I present to you, the Oxford community, our inaugural kindergarten recipient for this student recognition, the Harrison Forbush. Harrison's teachers had quite a lot to say about him, so I actually had to write some of it down, so excuse me as I read to you tonight, but there were many words for Harrison. As a kindergartner, you need to make quite an impression to be standing up here tonight. However, we had multiple teachers nominate Harrison for his "unabating positive attitude, enthusiasm for school," as you can see, "and kindness towards others." Harrison is the model kindergartner who has a heart for others and is quick to lend a helping hand or share with classmates. He approaches every task with a positive attitude and a genuine love for learning. Additionally, Harrison shows great determination and has an infectious curiosity, which is incredibly important when you are five years old. Harrison's teachers specifically noted his innate ability to positively affect the climate of a room and how they look forward to coming to school because they know he will be there. Congratulations, Harrison. I look forward to seeing your future endeavors. Take a bow.
Good evening. I'm Marie Murphy. I'm the Secondary Assistant Principal at Oxford Virtual Academy, and I have the pleasure of recognizing Claire Moore. Claire is a remarkable individual whose kindness and generosity embody the qualities of the Oxford Portrait of a Graduate. Deeply committed to her community, Claire is actively involved in three 4H groups where she has demonstrated exceptional leadership as the vice president of two clubs in just her second year. Her dedication and willingness to help others were recently acknowledged with the Oakland County 4H Spark Award, which honors those who inspire and uplift their peers through skill sharing and support. Claire's mentor teacher, Molly Darnow, has shared that Claire also thrives academically. First, as a full-time online student at OVA, and now she attends Legacy Hybrid. Here, she continues to excel and cultivate meaningful relationships with her classmates. Recently, she was appointed the yearbook editor at Legacy Hybrid. Claire consistently brightens the day of those around her with her bright smile and positive demeanor. Her contributions extend beyond academics, making her a cherished member of both her school community and beyond. I just want to make sure that Elizabeth Pantia is not in the audience tonight. Elizabeth Pantia is one of our high school students. She's a dedicated fifth-year OSAC student at Rochester Christian University, and she has made a significant impact on her community through her hard work and exceptional communication skills. I'm sorry she couldn't be here tonight, but we will make sure she gets her award.
Thank you for inviting us here this evening. Unfortunately, only one of my two students could make it. The other one, I'm sure, is hardworking at his job. So, Miguel, I just want to say I asked the teachers to give me a little statement about you. So, I have, Miguel brings a sense of joy and fun to every moment of the day and can bring a smile to those around him simply by his demeanor and constantly dancing, which I'd have him do, but he probably won't. It'd be a good follow-up, though, for the kindergartner that we saw. Miguel is a student who's kind-hearted and hardworking. He challenges himself to think critically about the text and encourages others to try their best at all times. Miguel is responsible and kind. He's a good student and hard worker. He does not need to be reminded to complete assignments. He's always willing to help out, whether it's hanging pictures, taking our therapy dog for a walk, or putting up Christmas lights. He can be counted on. Miguel is always so pleasant and respectful. He's an independent worker and can be counted on to help other students and staff whenever needed. One of my teachers did this for both of you. Both of these students have an inquisitive nature and have demonstrated a grasp of importance and relevance of education. I've always been impressed by their ability to see the deeper connections across many topics, and I have enjoyed their time in my classroom. They are constantly helpful and pleasant to work with. They contribute to a positive learning environment. So, Miguel, thank you for coming tonight, and I have your award for you. My other student is Devin Poland, and he has been a student with us also for three years. He's a senior this year, and the teachers also had amazing things to say about him. Devin is intelligent, logic-driven, hardworking, and has a desire to learn that improves any learning environment he is in. He is a student who is dedicated to their studies and helpful hand all around. He's one of the first smiling faces we see in the morning, and he makes an effort to show his actions mere this kindness in each interaction. Devin is kind, a leader, and a hard worker. He always stays on top of his assignments without needing reminders. He's also very helpful in the classroom without ever being asked. He takes chairs down in the morning, helps with attendance. He's always willing to help out with our therapy dog as well. Devin is so helpful in the morning. He's the first person to arrive, takes our chairs down, and assists with attendance. He is a great student in our classroom and does an impressive job balancing his school and work obligations. And then again, what our one teacher with both of these students have an inquisitive nature and have demonstrated a grasp of the importance and relevance of education. I've always been impressed by their ability to see the deeper connections across many topics, and I have enjoyed their time in my classroom. They are consistently helpful and pleasant to work with. So, thank you for having me this evening.
Hello, I'm Don Maskel, and I'm principal at Crossroads School. I'd like to congratulate all of the students receiving recognition this evening. It's quite an honor for all of them. I'd like to introduce our students receiving recognitions from Crossroads, and we are honored and delighted to be here. These two students have worked diligently and were selected by our staff at Crossroads as Students of the Month. These students have gone above and beyond and are very deserving of the award. The October Student of the Month is Zuri Brieslich. Zuri, would you step forward? Our November Student of the Month is Blake Zan... This is Blake. We also have two other students that were very deserving of the award but had conflicts in their schedule and were unable to be here this evening. The other two, our October Student of the Month was Alejandro Barra, and also in November, our Student of the Month was Dewan McDaniel. If you could give them a round of applause. Once again, congratulations to all the students recognized this evening with a really positive influence that you've given to others. We really appreciate that. Keep up the good work.
We'll give it just a second, because I know we have a little bit of a transition in the crowd, but if the next group, which is the IB Cohort Field Trip Presentation Group, wants to come get set up, we'll have you present. wants to come get set up, we'll have you present. All right, whenever you guys are ready, the show is yours.
Hi, everyone. We are a group of five seniors from the Oxford High School IB Diploma Program Cohort. In this program, we take all of our classes at an advanced level in hopes to earn in the spring an additional diploma in addition to our regular high school diploma. And so, we would like to do a field trip down to visit Appalachia High School in light of their tragedy in September.
I'm Mia Brown. I'm going to say who we are exactly. We are, like Sarah said, a part of the IB Diploma Program. And within this program, we have to do what's called a CAS project. CAS stands for Creativity, Activity, and Service. And for this project, we chose to do a service.
I'm Kristen. I'll be talking about our mission. As the last class physically present during our tragedy in November 2021, we feel a personal responsibility to help other people and carry on the legacy of our fallen Wildcats. And to do that, we have chosen to help raise money for the training of a therapy dog for Appalachia High School in Whitmer, Georgia. Therapy dogs were very important to our healing process, and the light and joy that they bring into our lives was crucial to make sure that we got better and felt safe in our school. To do this, we would like to raise money to cover the training of a therapy dog for one of the teachers who is highly affected in their tragedy. So, without further ado, meet Frankie Ryan, the dog that we are raising money to help train.
Okay, so far, we've done a lot of fundraising to reach our goal of $8,000. We started initially at the beginning of the school year by creating an e-funds account to funnel all the money that we raised into, but we switched this to a PayPal's account through the boosters, because it was taxless, and it was just easier for people to use instead of going all the way through the e-funds account. And the initial way we raised a lot of our money was through Facebook, and through this, we raised up to $2,000 just by reaching out to the community. And we also auctioned off a signed Barry Sanders football. This football was gifted to the 2023 IB cohort from the Lions when they did their project in Uvalde. And nobody was using it, so they gifted it to us to raffle off, and somebody from the community. We auctioned it to them, and we raised another $1,000. And then, some of us spoke at a boosters meeting, and they were able to provide funds for us to travel to Georgia. Yeah, Georgia, sorry, I was getting confused. And yeah, so we talked to them, and they were super helpful in this process. Then Catherine here works at Culver's, so she was able to set up a dining for dollars for us to raise some more money. And we just had a two-hour slot, but we were able to raise $2,000, $2,250, or $350, sorry. And then, lastly, what we've done so far is we reached out to the nightlot company. We've found these helpful in our school, and they donated $1,000. And then they also gave us some, like, not samples, but like, products, yeah, samples, I guess, for us to show to the board in Appalachia. Our upcoming plans for fundraising is we want to do a raffle of the band. So the band will come play at your house. It's been done in the past. It's, like, people really love it. So we're planning on doing that. And then, we also want to auction off the Rochester Petal Pub for a night.
We need your help. We are seeking approval for our trip to Georgia. Like Sierra said, we did talk to the boosters, and our finances for the trip will be covered. So we are just seeking approval for us to actually be able to go down there. And then, while we are down there, we want to do a variety of things. First, and obviously, we want to meet with Ms. Cassie, who is a teacher that we are helping at Appalachia. Of the money we have accumulated, we want to present that to her and any dog toys that we get received and donations from companies that are still incoming. We want to be able to connect with her since we haven't had the chance yet to meet her in person. And also, while we're down there, we want to meet with students and be able to help in any way possible. Since they, anyone that wants to talk to us, obviously, it isn't going to be something that's required or anything, but any support we can provide to them would be really beneficial, especially since their tragedy was very similar to ours. And being a few years out from this, we want to be able to provide, like I said, any support we can for someone that has just been through this, and since they've just gone back to school. Again, we just want to help in any way. And while we're down there, we are planning to give a safety presentation to their school board. They do not have any of the safety measures we implemented, such as the Evolve system, clear backpacks, school IDs, and specifically night locks. And so, we are going to talk to them about all of those things, and they're very uneducated about the security measures that they could have in place there. So we are not only looking to inform them, but also to hopefully persuade them. And like Sierra was saying, Nightlock did donate to our cause, but also, they donated the samples of the Nightlocks, which, for anyone that doesn't know, they go into the ground and the door so people can open them during an event like we had. And those are monumental for, during our tragedy. They kept so many of our students safe, and we want to be able to provide something like that for them, even though we hope they'll never actually have to use the system. And all these measures will also just bring great peace of mind to the students, because for us, going back to school and having all these safety measures was key to our mental health and feeling safe. And while our therapy dog will provide joy and hopefully emotional security, it won't provide physical therapy. So we, physical safety. So we want to, just hope to give that to them.
So, an overview of our budget that the Oxford Boosters are helping us with is just, we want our trip to last two days. Us five girls would like to go, and we will be taking two chaperones, one of them, Jim Gibbons. He will be one of our chaperones, and then we are still looking for our female chaperone, but we have been, our lovely superintendent has offered to go with us. And we've also had one of our safety administrators also offer, because that's a large part of why we want to go to Georgia. So in our budget, we have the cost allotted for airfare, our accommodation, which we would like to stay in an Airbnb for two nights. We have our meal cost, transportation, and then we have our total budget, which rounds out to about $4,500. In speaking to several organizations around Oxford, specifically the Oxford Boosters, we've been granted the very generous donation of agreeing to cover our travel costs, which is a major weight off of our backs as we are still struggling to get the funds to support the actual therapy dog itself. Yes, so that is all we have. We hope that you can help support our mission, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I do have one question. I have two, actually. First one is, how much more do you need for Frankie?
About $3,000.
Okay, and then, when were you hoping to go to Georgia?
We are hoping to make it happen. So, we've had some difficulty, because we would like to speak out one of their board meetings, much like we're doing right now here. But they didn't release their board schedule for the new year until about a week ago. So we're most likely looking at the first Tuesday in February, February 7th.
Great.
Is like our target date.
This is an amazing project. Very proud to be on the board where students do and think forward in this kind of way. So, great work. Any other comments?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right. Next item under School Presentations is Oxford Middle School.
Hi, everyone. I am Christy Satterstad, and this is Carl Sproul. We're going to make this short and sweet. Short like me, sweet like Carl. Yeah, I know. I worked on it all night. Okay, so the picture that you saw on the last slide, that was our team. Just wanted to recognize how great they all are, and we couldn't do this without them. So, thank you to the OMS staff. All right, so just a preview of the goals that we're going to review tonight. The first one is an attendance rate. The second one is a math goal. The third one is lift it up from our school quality results, and then, obviously, having fun. So let's dive into that first attendance goal of increasing our attendance rates up to 90%. So, if you see over the years, we really do have a positive trajectory here. Last year, we ended up at 92%. So that's pretty good. Right now, we're on track at 92.3%. We do have that middle-of-the-week peak at 95.5%, which is huge. Everybody loves those delayed start days. But we do see end-of-the-week fatigue sitting at 88.3%. So, some of our proactive actions for reaching this attendance goal. For all students, we have implemented our restorative practices. We also have fun things on Fridays, like Staff vs. Students and our Spirit Day raffles led by Student Council. And then, we also have our students monitor their own attendance and advisory. So just so they can see what barriers they have and also what successes. That graphic right there that you see, that is our tiered level of supports that we have for our students. So Ms. Jean Alice, our FSL, she really does a great job in monitoring the attendance for our kids. She partners with the parents, teachers, and then outside agencies as well to see what kind of barriers are there for the families and to see how we can help them improve. So, that is the way that we're going against, or going, moving forward for our attendance goal. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Sproul.
So for our second goal, as you can see, this is all relating to math. And the idea here is increasing understanding and application of problem solving and data analysis. I do want to go through a slide here that just shows our recent M-Step and PSAT data for language arts. So if you look over here on the left, or my right, we have our current seventh and eighth-grade cohorts. Our 21, 22 cohort are our current freshmen, and our 20, 21 cohort are our current sophomores. So what we are liking, and what we're happy to see here is we are starting to see this upward trajectory. If you look at our seventh, our current freshman group, that seventh-grade year, we're still trying to understand where that dip was the way that it is, but they did bounce back up that next year. But regarding math, we do see some of that same trend. It is going in an upward direction. But looking at this problem solving and data analysis, we lifted this need up in our math curriculum through our MYCAP process. For those that are not familiar, that is the State Process for School Improvement. So, we've done a couple of things to help aid in this improvement. Our math PLC has done a very diligent job of looking through all their grade-level content areas to see where problem solving and data analysis applies. So those kids are getting that extra reinforcement through it from sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade, and we'll see that build. With that, we have had some restructuring of our math scope and sequence. So new this year, we have Move Geometry out of the middle school, so we can allow more of that focus of those foundational math skills that our kids need in that sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade sequence. Another thing that's been added is Building Thinking Classrooms. It's a program that all of our math teachers are using. And what it does is it incorporates a lot of group work and hands-on experience with math. So the idea is that they can pick up this content in a different manner than just paper and pencil and using a calculator. If you go into any of our math classrooms, you'll see these big white boards all around. Our kids are up in groups. They're moving around. It's a really fantastic thing to see. So, we're looking to see that trend go up. And then also, we do have increased math intervention support. So we've adopted a new model. If you are familiar with the middle school, we have had what is called a Math Lab class. We used to run two sections per grade level, and this would be a pull-out, so it would be in lieu of one of our students' elective classes. And the class size would average anywhere from 12 to 15 kids. And we would identify these students through various data points, M-Step. At the time, it was Fast Bridge Testing. It's now moved over to STAR and academic performance in the classroom. So the approach that's different this year is we still have a portion of those pull-out classes, but what we have implemented are what are called push-in. So we've identified those kids that are sitting right on that cusp of proficiency, and they sit in a general classroom. So instead of having them come out, the interventionist then goes into the classroom and acts as a second teacher in there to help not only those kids, but everybody in the classroom. But we have specifically identified who those students are. So, we're looking for better data for this year with this group, and hopefully, everybody will start moving up from there.
All right, so our last goal comes from the School Quality Results Survey, and that's to increase the results of showing students how lessons relate to life outside of school. So, before we get into that, just wanted to recognize some of our highest-ranking indicators that we lifted up from that survey. One that I'm most proud of is that all groups, parents, students, and staff all recognize that there is a staff member at our school that a kid can go to when they have an issue. So we're extremely proud of those results, and we just look forward to improving that even more. The next one is that families are informed about school-sponsored activities. In 22, 23, we were at a 91%, and we increased that even more to 95% last year. So we do that through our biweekly newsletters, our advisory lessons, and then our amazing PTO that we have at the middle school as well. The last one is that all students are aware of safety and security procedures. In 22, 23, the students felt like 80% of them strongly agreed or agreed with that statement. And last year, we did raise that to 86%. So we owe that to our advisory lessons, the safety drills that we do, and actually having the students practice with the Nightlocks. So each student gets to practice with the Nightlock throughout the school year. So, we're looking forward to increasing that even more. So some of our lowest-ranking indicators, remember, the lower percentage for this is better. This, the first one, discipline is enforced fairly. That seems to come up every year, everywhere. We are working really hard to decrease this. And if you see the column in 22, 23, we are at 38% for parents, 42% for staff, and then 40% for students. And in 23, 24, I feel like it's a great accomplishment. We really reduced that disagree and strongly disagree results. So, we owe that to our continuation of our PBS Expectations implementation. We created a behavior flow chart, and then we also inform people about our restorative practices that we're using. The next one is that teachers give helpful and timely feedback about student work. So you'll see two different sets of percentages there. The first one is the helpful indicator, and the second one is the timely. The first one is the helpful indicator, and the second one is the timely. I wanted to pull those both out and put them together so that you can see, see them together. Something that we're working on, we're hoping that the migration to School G and using that gradebook solely will really help with that feedback and having it be helpful and timely. So looking forward to that improvement for next year. And then the one that we want to focus on tonight is how teachers successfully show students how lessons relate to life outside of school. Our students strongly disagreed or disagreed that we, that we do this. So in twenty-two, twenty-three, it was at fifty-two percent. And last year, we did reduce that to forty-five percent. So it's a positive increase. If you want to go to the next slide, I just want to show you all of the groups and the ratings. So our staff really does feel like, like we make this connection for our students through the curriculum. Our parents are kind of in the middle there. Some of them just, they don't know if that's being taught in the, in the lessons. And then the students, like I mentioned before, they, they disagree that it is being connected for them. So we are going to intentionally lift this up for our students using a variety of platforms. One of them is called Pathful. It's a career connector that we'll be utilizing. Zello's another one. This is really individualized to the students' needs and wants and desires, and it helps them explore what type of careers fit their profile. And then we also have guest speakers, we do field trips, and then, you know, those day-to-day curriculum connections. One example, we had in our sixth grade ELA class, Ms. Brennan brought in an ESPN writer. They were going over their personal narrative and, you know, figuring out how to write their own narrative. And he came in and talked about how he uses, you know, his, his skill to, as a job. I mean, how neat is that? ESPN. So great connection. So our goal is to really lift that up and, and tell our parents about the great things that we're doing to show how those lessons relate to life outside of school. The last one, most important, is to have fun. At the middle school, I think, I don't know, I've never been at a building that has so much laughter and joy. It's an amazing place to work every day. And I just wanted to share some of the fun things that we've done so far this school year. You'll see Mr. Banks, he, Jaden there in the yellow sweatshirt, he was the highest fundraiser. So he got to slime Mr. Banks in front of the whole school. So the crowd was cheering, and it was a great time. We also had staff versus students. It was like a Hungry Hungry Hippos activity. So they really got into it, and the students won, so they loved that even more. We decorated the halls for the holidays, and, you know, teachers really got into it. We made it into a competition. So we have our first, first trophy that we were able to award to our sixth school team. So I just wanted to recognize our web leaders and our student council. They are really the leaders of the building, and they bring ideas and passion every day to the work that they do. So that is all we have for you tonight. Thank you so much, and have a great night. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
I do have one. Going, going back to the attendance, um, let me go back. Yeah, there, there. I don't know if you touched on it, what is the Wake Up Wednesday?
So Wake Up Wednesday is a program that we're going to implement after the holidays. It's a time for students to come in on delayed start Wednesdays to get caught up on any missing assignments if they have, you know, missed school for whatever reason. They'll connect with Mr. Banks, our dean of students, or Christine Ellis, our family school liaison, just to give them that time and space to get caught up on work.
And, and it being listed on the, that's just something we're offering, an option? Or is that something we're highly encouraging them to come in on those days?
Yeah, so it will be an invitation, a formal invitation, if you are in this tiered level of supports. It's going to be highly encouraged. And then it's also an open invitation for anyone else that needs that space.
Wonderful. And I love the migration to School G, by the way. It makes life so easy.
Good. That's good to hear.
Yeah, no.
I'll let the teachers know that.
Yeah, let them. I, I'm sure it's a lot of work on their end, but as a parent, it's, it's lovely, so.
That's great.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right. Item number four on the agenda, scheduled public comment. I didn't see any Tanya or Kelly.
Nope.
Okay. Consent agenda is item number five. I'll take a motion. Colleen?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have support? Amanda? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number six on the agenda is the superintendent's report with the superintendent update.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Lots of exciting things happening. First and foremost, I do want to say congratulations to all of the students and their families for the awards that they received this evening. I know how much work goes into all of those things, whether it's academics, athletics, the music, all of it. It's a lot of work. And talking with parents who travel with their student to all different competitions, just all the time, energy, and money that they put into it. So we didn't really get a chance to recognize our parents, but parents, congratulations. You are a huge part of the equation on your student's success. So congratulations. Let's see. It's not working. Is it on? Hey, look at that. All right. Lakeville Cares About Kindness Month. I want to thank the IB coordinator, Jody, who sent me a video regarding some activities that they had, the fifth graders working with kindergarteners. But I also received a video today. So Aaron's helping me out, and can you pull that up? Of our fifth grade students presenting.
Our teachers took action by creating a home of the fun and ease connected to Karen. They even created the theme Lakeville Cares About Kindness.
Our teachers have taken action with helping us create Lakeville Cares About OHS and OMS posters that we have grown that to this school.
In addition to connecting with our community, we talked to our classmates in our children park about things we always did.
What kind of state was November 13th? Which state was November 11th? We went back to Dolph Dade and spent the morning in Lakeville's communities. We wanted to ask some of our students what they did to promote kindness in school. So you can get an idea of what was done around our growing profile of Karen. Enjoy this video and remember to check out some of the photos in this freebie on our IB newsletter.
What's your name?
Eleanor from the student classroom.
How do you show kindness at school?
I help people and, and.
What's your name?
Clara from the sister's room.
How do you show kindness at school today?
I've been picking up the trash under the blanket.
Nice. What's your name?
Camden.
What class are you from?
Mrs. Harris.
How do you show kindness at home or at school?
By helping my mom put the dishes in the dishwasher.
Thank you, Camden.
What's your name?
Kat from the classroom. Or?
I think the other day she was.
Well, I hold the door firstly, and my teachers are laughing. And the teachers show, the teachers can find that the only way that people can get the, the, they should come out.
And I want to thank Principal Gwen, who's in the audience, such a great support system for that program. So thank you. All right. Other things that have been going on. Of course, we had our eighth grade field trip to Washington, DC. They toured the US Capitol, visited several memorials, explored Mount Vernon, and saw historic treasures at the National Archives and Smithsonian Museum. I'm told it was a week full of learning and unforgettable memories. So obviously, an awesome opportunity for our eighth graders. Okay, this is very fun. This is very fun. So the high school, here's how this worked. The staff were nominating students who made them feel comfortable, accepted, tranquil, and safe this year. The students have been nominating staff who've made them feel the same way. The Detroit Lions donated four tickets to our students for the December 5th game against Green Bay Packers. These seats are in the lower bowl, and there are two student winners. A season ticket holder donated two tickets at the club level to a winning staff member. So obviously, thank you to the Detroit Lions for supporting our schools. And along with the tickets, the Lions wrote Oxford High School will forever be in our hearts. So now what I want to show you, so they had two student winners. They had an underclassman and a senior. This is the senior winning situation. So let's play this. And he's doing that over Zoom to the whole school. So very happy camper. That's Ethan, actually, in the, the picture there with the high school staff, administrative team, and of course Anita. The, so Ethan was the 12th grade winner. The underclassman was Olivia Graft, and the staff winner was Mr. Trotter. So a very wonderful celebration of our staff and students. And thank you again to the Detroit Lions. All right. The OELC or OELCD, DA, and OES, the Action Leadership Teams hosted a food drive, and they collected a total of over fourteen hundred food items to donate to the Oxford Orient Fish Food Pantry. So they said they had to make multiple trips and that the pantry was just astonished at how much they were able to collect. So that is a wonderful service project. So thank you for all of you who participated in that. Last Friday was our holiday soup and stroll. Actually, they're calling it the Soup Sweet and Stroll. It was nice and chilly, of course, but we had the soup to keep us warm. Thank you to Patty and the Food Services Team. We had the baked potato soup, which was a huge hit. And I think broccoli and cheese, is that right? Broccoli and cheese? We were out, I think we were out of soup by seven o'clock, and we had the wonderful school cookies, which our kids absolutely love. So wonderful event. Thank you for all of our volunteers who served the soup in the frigid, frigid weather. And of course, we had our high school choir. So I did, I was able to videotape a little bit of them singing. So wonderful evening of celebrating. And of course, we lit the Christmas tree in Centennial Park, which was also really amazing. So, and the next day, I got to be a judge. I was able to judge the floats. That's me and Jack Curtis and Joe Mador of the township. So wonderful, and again, still cold. And the marching band played, if you want to play that video. And they won best marching group, of course. So of course, a big hit for the parade. And thank you to Jim Gibbons and all of our staff who brought their students to march. And again, the nice cold weather. All right. Hopefully, Mike Whitney can talk about this fabulous experience. Our robotics teams had a chance to go to state competition. So Mike, you want to speak to this experience?
Sure. This is where I was all weekend. No, but we had our middle school robotics program has four teams in total, two of which made states this year. And so it was the Cyborg Cats, which is on the left on the screen, and the Metal Benders, which is on the right. They were on, the way states is set up, it's kind of like March Madness. So it's like bracketed out. There's two different divisions, but there's really not a difference. They're just thirty-six teams per side. So each, each Oxford team was actually ended up on a different, different bracket. There's, like I said, thirty-six teams on each side over two days of competition. Qualifiers go through Saturday and into Sunday, and then the elimination rounds are in Sunday. There's also a big portion of Saturday morning is judging. And so that portion, they're presenting their engineering workbook and presenting all the work that they've done up to that point, all the engineering work. The whole team is presenting there. And then the competition side is like the drive team, as you see in that left side. They do the competition portion of it. Both teams ended seventh overall in their respective bracket and moved on to the elimination rounds where the top, ends up being pretty much the top 12 teams of each bracket end up playing in a double elimination format. Unfortunately, unfortunately, fortunately, it's a very successful season, right? I mean, that's, that's amazing that they, they were both there. But neither, neither team ended up making it to the finals. They were eliminated within the bracket play, or the elimination play. But it was awesome. It's awesome to see them. It's awesome to see our kids just like kind of come alive. A bunch of these kids I know that, I mean, this is their, this is their passion, right? I've, I've saw kids smiling I've never seen smile. And yeah, it was really good. It was a really good weekend.
Thanks, Mike. And thank you to the coaches and the parents and everyone involved in supporting the teams. And hopefully, next year, we'll have our own competition here in Oxford. That's what we're working towards. So that'll be an excellent opportunity for everybody to come out and support our robotics team. So thank you for sharing that. And last, we again have our Strategic Planning Community Forum, January 22nd. We have sent out invitations to the entire district. We sent them out to our parents. We've sent them out to community members. And right now, we have about sixty-five people signed up. It's not too late. We have two sessions that you can attend, one through, one to 3:00 PM or six to eight:00 PM. I have the QR code that you can scan, or you can click on the link to sign up. We're going to keep the signup open until the 20th of December because obviously, we need to make sure we have the spaces reserved to have the meetings. So I encourage everyone to sign up. We would love all your voices and participation in this event. So that concludes my update. Lots of great stuff. And as always, it's an honor to be a superintendent here at Oxford Community Schools.
Thanks, Tanya. All right. Next item, under superintendent's reports, the District Safety Committee.
Yep. So I'll speak to this. So both Mike and I sit on the District Safety Committee. We meet regularly and such. What's really nice about this is on, on this particular occasion, it has to do with a lot of our local government officials. So we have representatives from the village, from the township, as well as the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office and our emergency services that serve our school district. So including the Oxford Fire Department, the Police Department in Oxford, and the Sheriff's Department. New to this meeting this time was representatives from McLaren Hospital, which is recently opened, which is a great addition. Each time we meet, we usually have different topics. Each time we meet, we usually have different topics that we go over and we discuss and hear and get feedback from, from those representatives. This time, the majority was spent on our EOP plan. There's been some formatting changes that have been required, some new information that's been added inside of there. So it gave a chance for those people that would be responding and utilizing those plans for anything that may occur inside the district to give their feedback, look at it, see if there's, you know, grammatical stuff or if the content information and people's stuff. From a board perspective, we can look to seeing or having that EOP as a final draft sometime in the first part of next year for us to look at and finalize. Did I miss anything, Mike? Okay.
Great. Okay, we had, thank you. We had the same day we held the district. We also had the parent safety committee. Similar to what James just mentioned, they reviewed similar information, additional information they reviewed. Kathy Rassigew has been working on the reunification maps. One of the gaps that we needed to fill was what happens at the reunification site that everybody knows exactly where everybody should be and making sure that those, that the staff at those locations have that map. They know where everybody needs to set up. And so we're getting those finalized. And we got some thoughts from our parents on that. The other piece around extracurricular safety that James spoke to, again, we continue to get input from our parents on the parent safety committee. This is something we're looking at for next year. We're not looking at any changes for this year, but we'll need to consider changes for next year. So we have a very long runway to make these decisions. And we want to get as much input as possible. So to James' point, we're trying to get the proposal finalized with as much input as possible over the next month or so. And we should have that out, I would say, beginning of February. Thank you. Great. Any questions on the Superintendent's Report? All right, moving on to item number seven, Board of Education Matters. In the packet was the field trip requests for the OHS IB cohort field trip presentation that we had earlier. We'll vote on that in the first meeting in January. Item number B, our committee updates. We had a finance committee just this past Friday, actually. One of the things that we really honed in in that meeting is preparing for the budget timeline and what that would look like and the presentations to the board after January. Mike and I made the recommendation to bring to the foreboard, which falls within what you'll see under the Governments Committee, the operating procedures, is that we actually don't present the first budget until the second meeting in January, just because we know that first one can be very overwhelming with all of the elections of the officers, organizational meeting, including that you have two other brand-new board members joining that, you know, may not be familiar with some of the vernacular yet or the flow of meetings. Outside of that, we talked a little bit about some of the facilities updates. There's a couple boilers that they're working to replace. One here at Lakeville, and then two at OEIC that both need to be replaced and working through the process on that. And then the OMS kitchen update, in terms of where we're with that, is we're waiting on the Health Department to come out and do final inspections. And then the roof and kitchen at OEIC, we're still waiting for state approval. And unless that changed from Friday, no, it has not changed. So those, those are kind of the, I think, overarching discussion points from the meeting. Mike, I feel like I am missing one thing, but I don't, I think it was all about putting together the presentations and education for the, the board. We did talk about LCA a little bit, authorization, but that'll be in the presentation in January, we decided. So LCA's Lighthouse Academy.
And yes, and also not that it's finalized, but the response from the, from the roof as far as the.
The SETSEG.
The SETSEG.
Yeah, and working through some of the SETSEG claim for the fire hydrant property. Any questions? All right. Nothing of voting substance this time. But certainly after the first year, you're going to see a lot of activity pick up around the finance space. John has put together a lot of work in terms of helping individuals understand how we receive revenue, what kind of categoricals we have, and then, you know, what it kind of looks like when you guys see it here at the table. So, all right. The other is our Governance Committee. The Governance Committee met not too long ago. And gosh, is Christine still here? Did she take off? Oh, that's okay. So we worked really hard on putting together. One of the goals we had set out at the beginning of this year was to create board operating procedures. We started with a code of conduct at the beginning of the year, and then we worked through, took a little bit of a break during the superintendent search, and then ramped up after Dr. Milligan started. And in the packet that was available publicly was our board operating procedures. And gosh, she did such a good job bringing our vision to life. She took our words and made them pretty. So for the board, this is what the Governance Committee is proposing that we vote on. There is a motion in the agenda, but overarching, we thought this would be a great tool, not only for the current board members that have been here a couple years, but also for new board members and then future board members as they're seeking election and future election cycles, understand this is how we operate, that it is a board of seven, you're one of seven, you're not an individual. When you're here, you're representing all seven people. And most importantly, you're representing the children and staff of Oxford Community Schools. So with that, Amanda, did you have any other comments? Or I think you guys can all read it.
No, yeah, that was, that was a great ramp up. Again, I want to thank Christine. That was an excellent job that, that she helped us get in the last very time crunch of two weeks. So really, really appreciate that. And I'm glad that we met the goal and have it here by the end of the year for our new board members and for our next year's Governance Committee to continue to expand and work on. So that's, that's about it.
All right.
I just want to thank you all for, for helping to put this together, too. I know a lot of that was working and pushing for that. And I think it's very needed, and I appreciate it.
Yes. Good, all right.
Do you want me to comment now, or you want me to wait till the motion?
It's up to you. If you want to move the motion, then we can have a discussion.
All right, I'll start the motion. Okay. Move to approve the Oxford Community Schools' Board Operating Procedures document as presented.
And do I have support? Mike Whitney and discussion, Colleen.
Okay, I just have three comments. First of all, I appreciate and I'm so thankful for all the hard work that you guys did with this. I, I know how hard this was and what a huge undertaking it was. And I think that great detail was given in that whole document. It was, it's really good. And finally, I just want to tell you that I value so much that several times in the document, you talked about the importance of the board representing all Oxford kids. And that was great and didn't go unnoticed by me. So thanks for your hard work.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, this will be uploaded to the board page, too, for anyone who wants some casual reading. All right, agenda item three under that section is our Policy Committee. Amanda?
So we are bringing forward three for first reading. We met last week. And we are just ramping up all of the July revisions from Troon. We have a few more lingering that are still out for questions, whether legal or, you know, district personnel. So we have four-ish that are approximately left that we will have to bring hopefully in January. But of the entire July update, we are pretty much through. And you'll see the three that we brought tonight, two of them, we did not change anything from Troon's. There was a optional on 5510. And you can see the redlined version to see the option that we had chosen, which was essentially leaving the final say for non-curricular clubs to the superintendent. And then the other one that we did make a change on is 2504.01, public participation at board meetings. It was a very small change. And it just had to do with the fact that Troon's verbiage had recommended that we say that every speaker come and state their name and address. And that has historically not been our procedure in Oxford. And we felt as a committee that we did not want to change that. And so we just changed the language to say that the member of the public will provide, which that satisfies when we give the card for a public comment. So that was the change that, that we had made. Everything else was standard as to that policy. So did anybody have any questions on those? Okay, I can go ahead and just keep moving into it then.
You want to make the motion?
Yep, I move to approve the first reading of board policy numbers, 2504.01, 5405, and 5510 as presented.
Do I have support? Anne? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item B, annual policy updates.
Yep, so these are the ones that we had already discussed last time, that there was one that we had changed. The rest were standard from Troon. We didn't receive any questions on those ones. So I will go ahead with that as well. And move to approve the adoption of policy numbers, 2201, 2303, 2401, 2405, 5201, 4207, 4213, 4215, 5105, and 5807.001 as presented.
And do I have support? Anne? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Amanda. Great work, Policy Committee. I know it's been a tough year. All right, item eight on the agenda is unscheduled public comment. And we have none. Item nine on the agenda is closed session. Can I get someone to read the motion? Amanda?
Move to meet in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 81A, to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of an employee.
Do I have support? Colleen? Do I have discussion? Roll call vote, James.
Yep, Summers, yes. Adgerson?
Yes.
McDonough?
Yes.
Sorry, get to my other side here. Schultz? Whitney?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes. All right, 7:52, we are going into closed session. It's 9 o'clock, we're returning from closed session. We do have one motion for open session. Amanda?
Move to approve the Superintendent's Midyear Progress Report Review as completed in closed session.
Do I have support? James? Any discussion? Tanya, we're so happy to have you and that you are hanging in there through all of the wonderful challenges that you've been presented with since starting. So thank you so much for being on our team. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item 10 on the agenda is scheduled activities. Don't forget, holiday recess is coming up at the end of December. Whoop, whoop. Administrative clarification? Any final board comments?
Yes. So to both yourself and Colleen, it's been a pleasure. I know you guys aren't going very far. I expect to bump into you guys in the community, but thank you for, one, all your knowledge and everything that you've bestowed upon me, and your leadership and advocacy to all our students in the district. Thank you.
Thanks, James. All right. It's 9:01, meeting adjourned.